For April 14th, 2015, if we can have the roll call, please.
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Pete Cremon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Here.
Carl Wymer?
Here. If people will stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and strong. All right. Glad to see so many people here. This is what democracy's supposed to look like. Just for your information and for announcements, if you have your cellphone with you, like I do, if you want to set it on silent or turn it off, that would be great, so we don't hear a lot of bird chirping and other weird noises. We have three public hearings in an open session this evening. If you have anything to hand out to us, it's really good if our clerk down front gets a copy too for the official record. I just want to also announce that we had two committee of the whole meetings today. One was this afternoon where we spent two hours with Executive Laus, where he presented another update on the progress and developments of the new jail project. And then, just before we came out here, we had a discussion with our senior deputy prosecutor, attorney Karen Frakes regarding the Growth Management Hearing this board case number Also want to put a plug in, we have lots of advisory committees that advise both the council and the executive, and I try to put a plug in for one of them that has openings. There's lots of openings. If you go on our website, you can find out about those. The one I'm plugging tonight is the Sumas, Everson, Nook Sac Flood Control Subzone Advisory Committee. And if you can memorize the name, you can be on the committee. Like I said, the application is on our website, and that really deals with the flooding in that area, and I think you need to be a resident of that area to be a member of that. We're going to move right into our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. The first one is an ordinance amending the Watcom County Code Title 20 in the Comprehensive Plan Regarding Surface Mine Permitting Mineral Resource Land Designation Process and the Mineral Resource Lands Designation Criteria. I think the council has heard this multiple times. Anybody need a staff update or report? Doesn't look like it, so we're going to move right into the public hearing. This is an issue we've been dealing with for quite a while now. So I'm going to open the public hearing. The way this works, I'm going to call through the names that are on the list. If you signed up for the wrong public hearing, that's all right. You'll get your chance at the right one. And anybody that didn't sign up can also have a chance to speak. As you come up, if your name is more complicated than Jones or Smith, it's great if you can spell it for us for the record. And everybody will be given three minutes to speak, and when there's about 30 seconds left, the clerk's going to give you a warning that you're just about out of time, so you can wrap it up. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have quite a few people. Oh, I'm looking at different ones. Let's see. For this one, we have Abe Jacobson, Roger Hall, and Chris Halterman. This is on mineral resource lands. Mr. Jacobson, is that the one you meant to sign up for?
Yes, Abe Jacobson, live in Bellingham. Yes, this is like the Japanese tourist who gets on the wrong bus in Belgium, and there was a good movie on that. No, actually, gravel mining, quarrying, and mining is something I know a little bit about. I used to work with the Mining and Minerals Department of the State of New Mexico, which implemented a statewide site restoration program for quarries and mines. And I support the changes that are recommended by staff for making this a conditional use, simply because the effects of mining on the landscape, both the landscape that's seen by neighbors and, more importantly, the aquifer hydrology, it's so long-lasting that there's no harm in getting peer review. And sometimes neighbors can provide a useful peer review, bring up things that either staff or the proponent may not have thought of. And so, the conditional use status provides a good mechanism for getting this peer review. It's not a punitive step. It's not an excuse for neighbors to be nimby's, and if they try to be, I'm sure and I hope that they will fail. But it's a good way to get peer review, because you want to end up with a lot of scarred mountainsides like facing us across the bay from a bankrupt quarrying operation. I mean, that's an example of a site that will probably never be properly reclaimed, simply because the operator will not have the resources. So, good work. I appreciate that conditional use.
Thank you. Roger Hall, Chris Halterman, and Vincent Foster. Okay. Chris Halterman, Vincent Foster, and Ben Vandermei.
Chris Halterman, Watcom County. I addressed you, the council, respectfully, a couple of weeks ago regarding this issue, and I do not believe that you have yet addressed the fact that your mineral resource lands are in the guidelines for your GMA, that you're supposed to properly plan for the county. And I find it somewhat irresponsible when you take actions that are going to cause the cost of housing and roads and everything with regards to having the resources available here. I know that in speaking to Councilmember Brenner, she talked about, well, it's cheaper to ship it and barge it in. Where are you going to ship it and barge it in? Is it going to be Bellingham Bay? Is it going to be down at the Fairhaven Terminal? Are you going to bring it up to the Gateway Pacific Project Terminal, if that ever happens? How are you going to barge it in? How's that supposed to happen? And you're supposed to plan for this. It's part of your mandate in the Growth Management Act that you do that. And you are supposed to be planning for a 50-year supply. It's your responsibility to do that. And you have created something that is going to slow it down, it's going to increase the cost to everybody here, it's going to make it so that single-family residences, apartments, condos, you name it, all the roads we travel on that are necessary for people to get to and from, home, business, industry, is going to cost more money if you make it so that you have less land planned for, because you are not going to get any of the companies and the people put in their applications, especially, you talked about the SEPA, putting it as a front-loaded. Now, you looked at you were going to do an overlay, but I did not hear the council say that you're going to have Watcom County pay for that SEPA to have it done. And then still have absolutely no obligation to say, yes, this land looks like it's compatible for what we want to have future planned zoning for that particular area. I think it's your responsibility to make sure that you're doing the due diligence financially, economically, for this community, and I'm not sure that you've done that with trying to change it the way it's happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list was Vincent Foster, and then Ben Vandermei. All right. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to us about the mineral resource land ordinance in front of us? All comers.
Greg Brown, Watcom County. I've spoke to this before, and I'm definitely against both. This is another barrier to business and working in the county. We've chased other things out of the county, why don't we just chase the gravel out of the county, too? It's just easy to do than deal with it.
Thank you. Last chance, anybody else? Seen no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the wishes of the council? Oh, one more. Come on down. If there's anybody else, come on up front, so we can move along, because there's a bunch of people here that want us to talk about the jail.
Yeah, hi, my name is Rhonda Lurch, and I live in Everson, and I live on the gravel. About 10 years ago, a cute little gravel pit was started by Mr. Van Boven. And my dad worked in a gravel, on the trucks and hauled gravel, so I kind of like sorting rocks and so forth. And I stopped in and I spoke with him, and he had this grand idea that he was going to have this small gravel pit, put up all the topsoil, and then he was going to arrange it all to have homes, put homes in there, that they'd have lakefront. Well, subsequently, that has now been sold to Granite. It's huge, it goes clear up to the Van Wick Road, and they have harassed neighbors to try to get their land to dig more gravel. So, some limits might be in order. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else on the mineral resource land ordinance? Seen no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Mr. Brown has moved approval. Ms. Brenner?
Well, since I was mentioned, I want to clarify what I did say. I was told that the cheapest way to do it is in Watcom County. And I said, well, I've heard from people who are in the business that it could be cheaper to barge, it could be cheaper to ship, and I can't get an answer out of anybody as to how much we're importing now, how much we're exporting. We're being told to save a bunch of gravel for a resource for Watcom County, but none of it might stay in Watcom County. So we don't have any control over that, for one thing. And I will say, we did put a clause in the ordinance that the county is going to do an environmental assessment. So that will save the proponents money in the, what did you call it, the front-loading part. And I think that's going to help both the neighbors and the applicant. So I think we did listen to everybody. And the thing about chasing mineral resources or gravel out of Watcom County, again, we have no idea how much of it is even used in Watcom County, or if it's not shipped out now and how much is. So it makes it impossible for us to know what our needs are and will they be fulfilled with however much we've set aside. So I think that this ordinance does a much better job on making sure that whatever happens, that the county takes the lead in a lot of it. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Mann?
I just want to echo Ms. Brenner's sentiments. We have spent a lot of time on this ordinance, and for people to come up here and throw out somewhat inflammatory comments does not do justice to the amount of work that has been done to this, and we are going to do this comprehensive look at the gravel supply and the environmental review, of course. And I'm going to support it for those reasons, and I just wanted that to go on the record instead of us sitting here and just all being quiet and voting for it.
All right. Any other comments or discussion? Seen none, I guess we're ready for the roll call.
And this is not actually to adopt the ordinance, it's just to move it forward.
Oh yeah, this was a motion to move this forward for concurrent review with other comprehensive plan amendment proposals.
Thank you.
That was your motion, right?
That was my motion.
Okay.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes. That passes unanimously. We're going to move on to our second hearing, which is an ordinance finalizing a revised system of assessment for consolidation drainage improvement district number 21. And it looks like no one signed up, but I'm going to open the public hearing on that anyway. Does anybody want to talk to us about drainage improvement district number 21? It's not as hot a topic as the jail, I guess. All right. Seen no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
Oh, I'll move approval, but I have one question.
Okay, Ms. Brenner has moved approval. Go ahead.
For staff or whoever put this together, it looks to me like there's going to be virtually no change. Am I understanding this correctly? It's like cleaning it up, making it a little more regular, but...
Paula Cooper Public Works. Essentially, a few years ago, we took on a project to automate all the different districts, and this was one of the districts that didn't have an actual map that we could digitize for the benefit zones. So we had to kind of go back to the old records, which basically had a parcel, and it said so many acres at 75% benefit zones. We kind of had to create that map from the soils information and the topography. So we tried to, you know, reflect relative benefit and then the acreage, and not change things much from the past. There was one little area that we did reduce the benefit zone, because the district is having a hard time making the drainage better for them, because it's next to a wetland. But otherwise, it's pretty much the same as it was before.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seen none, we are ready for the roll call.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Now we're on to the public hearing, where we have invited the public to comment on the proposal for a new Watcom County jail and offer specific ideas for jail diversion programs. And this isn't a kind of a normal hearing. We're not required to have this hearing. The council felt like it was a good idea to hear from the public at this point. Just to put some little sideboards on it, there's been some people that have been questioned why they're only got three minutes. It's going to be hard to tell us much in three minutes. Well, look at how many people are in the room that want to speak to this, and multiply that times 10 minutes, and guess what time we get out of here? So you have three minutes. If you convince us that there's a good idea there, we can invite you back up after the hearing, or we can invite you to come to a committee meeting later on to discuss a good idea in more depth. But we really wanted to reach out to the public and hear ideas both about the jail and diversion projects, programs. The council has taken a real interest in diversion. I don't think there's much argument, and we'll see at the end of it, and we're not going to have a big discussion now, but I don't think there's much argument from the council that we need a new jail. If you've visited the jail over here, it's an inhumane place, it's dangerous, it's falling down around us. We need a new jail. So that's not really the discussion. The discussion here is size of the jail, location of the jail. You're certainly welcome to comment on that. A lot of that stuff is pretty well-defined at this point. But we really are interested in alternatives and diversion programs, and the more specific you can be and give us clear examples, that would be really wonderful. I think the council's very interested in hearing those things as a way to perhaps slow down the growth of the jail, those types of issues. And we're going to start this evening by hearing a short from Executive Laus, who's been making the rounds for a few months now, trying to sell this project. The council's really looking for a way to support the jail, to move it forward, and we want to hear some of those diversion things. And after Executive Laus, we're going to hear from Bill Elfo, who actually runs the jail. Then we're going to open it up for the public. Mr. Executive?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members, and community. It is good to be here tonight. As you know, Watcom County has been working on a new correctional facility as early as 1997, according to my research. We've gone through many years of discussions, have spent literally hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars in the last 18 years to get to the point we are today. Over the last three years as executive, I've had the pleasure of working with the council, and based on the recommendations of the Jail Task Force, we implemented an environmental impact statement and needs assessment. As a result of that, we defined a jail facility of approximately 521 beds. With the council's support, we've bought 38-acre property on Le Bounty Road for the new correctional facility. We've gone through a preliminary design stage up to the level that we have it as today. And as of last Friday, in working with the mayors throughout our county, presented to the legislative bodies a jail use agreement and a jail financing agreement for your consideration. As a result of that, this is a big, major capital project for Watcom County, but it also encompasses what we all consider to be a great need in our community for additional criminal justice diversion programs beyond what we're currently providing. I have provided documentation to the council at the last meeting and as of this afternoon, that we're providing spending through our Behavioral Health Fund about $4.1 million. It's my understanding that Bellingham is spending about $2.5 million beyond that on diversion programs, but we have a shared goal to do even more. So tonight, I am looking forward to hearing specific comments from the community as it relates to the diversion programs, and also to hear comments as it relates to the progress we've made to date on this. As I articulated this afternoon, is ultimately this is a legislative decision. I've done what I consider to be good work on behalf of the administration, working with the sheriff to bring forward a proposal for the community's consideration. To make that happen, the cities and the county need to agree on a cost-sharing amplification for the construction of that. Ultimately, to make all of this work, the voters are going to need to approve a 0.2% sales tax increase in either August or November. So I appreciate working with you, and I am going to continue to work with you in a positive manner to see whether or not we can bring resolution to a problem that we've been grappling with as a community as early as 1997. With that, I'd ask if the sheriff would like to provide his comments, and then I'm looking forward to what the community has to say.
Thank you. And as the sheriff comes up, I just wanted to make it clear, in case, there seem to be some mistaken ideas of what was going to happen this evening. There's not going to be a decision this evening, that's why this hearing's a little different than normal. Normally, when we have a hearing, we have a potential decision in front of us. We just wanted to hear from the public early on, so there's not going to be a decision this evening. We're working through a whole number of questions for the next about a month before we hit a deadline for the August ballot. It might go longer than that to the November ballot, might go longer than that, we don't know. So there won't be a decision, you'll have plenty of time, and ultimately, it will go to all of you for a vote, anyway. Sheriff Elfo?
Thank you, council. Appreciate you having me here again this evening. As your sheriff, I see the effects of untreated mental illness, both on the street and in our community and in our residents' homes, as our deputies respond out there to deal with those situations. And ultimately, I see the results when people with the mental illness that are dangerous, that commit crimes, are housed in our Watcom County jail. I've been a stalwart advocate for controlling the need for increased jail space through prevention, diversion, and treatment, and I'm glad that these conversations have focused more attention on the need for system-wide improvements of the criminal justice and mental health systems. Increased attention on successful programs that our health department recently highlighted at a meeting two weeks ago, I'm very pleased with the success of those programs and believe they could be built on, as well as those programs that were previously considered, recommended, planned for, but were unable to be funded for a variety of reasons. While troubling decades of public policy at the local, state, and federal level have resulted in jails becoming our nation's de facto mental institutions, correcting this problem will require dramatic policy and funding priority shifts at all levels of government, particularly by the state of Washington. Respectfully as your sheriff, it's not my role to finalize the county council's policy or funding priorities and decisions. However, despite dramatic increases in improvements in the treatment and diversion, it is fundamental that Watcom County has a moral, ethical, and legal obligation to provide a safe facility to fulfill its statutory and constitutional responsibility. It's my obligation as your sheriff, however, to operate it in a safe, legal, humane, and constitutional manner. And I also have the obligation and responsibility to continue to inform you of conditions in the jail that relate to capacity, as well as failing infrastructure and the lack of effective space for treatment and evaluation. I previously briefed you on these issues at meetings over the last number of years and provided you some very detailed written comments for consideration with this hearing that I sent you on April 9th, and the public can find these at watcomcountysheriff.org, if they're posted there. When we have reports from the Department of Justice warning of a catastrophic loss of life in the event of a fire or other calamity, when numerous citizens and law and justice committees were tasked with making recommendations regarding jail issues in 1997, 2000, 2004, 2008, and most recently in 2011, and all of these committees reached the same conclusion, reporting the urgency of replacing the failing facility citing life safety issues, when we know we do not have sufficient space for effectively treating those with severe mental illness who are required by the courts and the law to remain in jail, when we know that we have an obligation to house people in a manner that does not compound or aggravate existing behavioral health disorders, as well as an ethical obligation to provide effective treatment, when we ask our dedicated professional employees who put their lives on the line every day to work into that facility, and when we know we have enormous liability issues, my recommendation is the county move to remedy the situation without undue delay. I know council has received numerous comments citing the need for diversion and treatment. I agree wholeheartedly that these programs need to be maximized, and people that do not need to be in jail should be diverted into community-based programs, if at all possible. Other programs could also be added. As for diversion in Watcom County, law enforcement diverts many nonviolent and non-dangerous offenders from jail. In 2014, the sheriff's office alone issued 566 field citations as lieu of arrest for misdemeanors. Whenever possible, prudent, and consistent with public safety, law enforcement filed both felony and misdemeanor charges with the prosecuting attorney to allow the issuance of a summons instead of a physical arrest and booking into jail. For those booked into jail, the courts released 58% within three days and 64.6% within seven days. The jail-based behavioral health program has dramatically improved the capacity for evaluation, treatment, and reentry to include making connections with community-based services. However, when services are delivered by whispering through a food hatch and a steel door, its full effectiveness is not realized. I have served on the Behavioral Health and Substance Abuse Revenue Advisory Committee since its inception, and I support Ms. Deacon's efforts at the Health Department, which she recently highlighted, the long-awaited, new, and promising evidence-based mental health courts. I think that's a big step to treating the mentally ill who do wind up in jail, and they're funded both in our district court and in the Bellingham Municipal Court by the Behavioral Health and Chemical Dependency Tax. The probation department's intensive pre-trial supervision of both sentenced and pre-trial offenders, that's people that are hardcore, that have drug problems, that have alcohol problems, and have mental health problems, that are supervised in the community very effectively by our county probation department rather than locked up in jail. Housing for high-risk offenders upon their release. Ms. Deacon was very involved with the City Gate project, and people getting out of jail that have high risk to reoffend, they're housed appropriately in a facility where they're supervised, and they have a high success rate, even from those that they thought would undoubtedly fail, they're receiving success. These programs, we also have one of the most robust juvenile offender diversion programs that prevent kids from entering the adult criminal justice system. The idea is to keep them out of juvenile detention, and the more you keep them out of juvenile detention, the less they are likely to go into the adult system. They stay in school, they're supervised, so those programs are very good, and I support them. The fund has also worked upstream. A behavioral health specialist is placed in every school district, at least one, and more in the larger school districts, to help deal with the behavioral health, mental health, or addiction problems of children and prevent them from going on. Aside from the intensive probation supervision, our county probation department supervises 2,000 pre-trial and sentenced offenders who would otherwise be required to serve time in the jail system. I am very intrigued by the possible new funding sources that exist to make our Behavioral Health Triage Center a viable alternative to jail. For so much time was spent planning... For so much time was spent planning this process, and unfortunately, it was not funded. However, new legislation that will take effect on April 1st of next year provides cleared guidelines and some funding for diversion, and we heard from Mr. Ballantyne from the regional network about increased Medicaid funding to help fund the diversions or the Triage Center. However, despite the success of diversion and treatment programs, we will continue to have a need for a safe jail. Some dangerous and violent persons suffering from mental illness will be required to be housed in the jail. I am fully confident that our legislature will continue to influence our jail population by transferring responsibility for sentenced felons from state prison to county jails and continue to reduce those provided services while released on felony probation. I join our public defender, our prosecuting attorney, all four of our Superior Court judges, and both of our district court judges in urging you to move this issue forward, move the jail forward and the mental health and addiction treatment programs. Again, I ask you, if you not had the opportunity to do so, please carefully read and consider my written comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff Elfo. We're going to open the public hearing now. Like I said earlier, everybody will get three minutes. You'll get a warning when there's about 30 seconds left. Like I said earlier, we're really interested in clear ideas on where we should go with this. The more concise you can be, the better. We also are trying to just track misinformation that's out there because lots of people have been putting out misinformation like we're about to build an 800-bed jail.
Inaccurate.
What's that?
Inaccurate.
Inaccurate. 800-bed jail. What we're talking about is a 521-bed jail. So we're really trying to get a list of questions that we need to make sure are addressed because people are starting to believe things that are not really where we're going. So I'm going to open the public hearing. I have three sheets of people signed up, and I'm going to just call through the names. There's seats open up front as I call your name. If you want to come down and take a seat so we can move through people quicker, that'd be great. First three names are Bill Newman, David McCluskey, and Greg Winter. So Bill Newman can start us off.
Good evening to the council and members of the audience. My name is Bill Newman. I live in the county, and I'm here in support of the jail getting and moving forward mainly because I think as Wackam County, in particular Los Angeles, has grown immensely in the past 20 years, and the jail is in its condition, it is very crowded, and I think that it is now a time to build a new jail. The longer we wait to build this jail, it's going to cost us more money. The county has always spent a lot of money on this jail, millions of dollars in the property, purchasing the property, and now it is time that we get this done. When you get a crowded condition and as the jail is right now, with no way of people to exercise and let themselves feel a little more relaxed in a setting that they would not rather be in, then all it's going to do is cause problems in that eventually there will be more violence within the jail itself. I think that the jail is very necessary. The size of the jail, this 520 beds, is it? So I think that's the right size and at the cost at 2/10ths of 1% is not that much to ask in terms of of sales tax. That's what I've read. And that the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us, and I don't think that no one wants to put that on the backs of the taxpayers in terms of property owners. So I think it is now a time to move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. David McCluskey, Greg Winter, and Joy Gilfelin.
Hello, my name is Dave McCluskey, and I live in the city of Bellingham. In a perfect world, we wouldn't need any jails, but with 298 beds available in our jail and 403 inmates fighting over them, it's easy to see that we are far from a perfect world. Wackam County Code Chapter 1.28.100 is pretty clear on the issue of overcrowding, and Wackam County county voters realized this problem over 10 years ago and voted for a tax increase. It's been 10 years with no action, and due to rising construction costs and money wasted on the upkeep of a jail that's falling down, we're even farther away from that jail now. It appears some folks want to drag this on even longer using mental health as a reason to put brakes on things. While mental health in Wackam County is a worthy topic to discuss, it's not an issue to be bundled in with a jail. There's no requirement in Chapter 1.28 for treating mental health issues. Mental health is covered in Chapter 2.44 of the Wackam County Code, which states, "The department shall administer funds for behavior health programs, including substance abuse and mental health services." It's not the responsibility of the jail to carry the burden of mental health treatment. In fact, there are even two different chapters in the code regarding tax usage. Chapter 3.33 is a sales and use tax for funding jails. Chapter 3.37 is sales and use tax for chemical dependency or mental health treatment services and therapeutic court programs. The bigger issue seems to be the financing of the jail. .2% tax increase will have a tough time passing, I believe, given that the 1%, that was already voted in and the improper ways which those funds have been handled. Ornaments 2004-068 in Chapter 3.33.060 of the Code states, "When distributing monies collected under the chapter, the state treasurer shall distribute 100% of the monies to Wackam County." So how is it that 6.1 million or 19% of the money collected is actually going to the city of Bellingham instead? While a .2% sales tax increase may not sit right with voters, a .1% increase likely would. If the city of Bellingham started playing above board and given the 19% they took away with agreeing to let the county have 100% of the new sales tax along with the baked capacity, I think they would end up pretty close. Everyone seems to open a jail discussion with a statement, "We agree a new jail is needed, but..." Well, I'm closing my discussion with that statement, except I'm saying, "Let's get rid of the 'but' and get a new jail done." Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, Joy, and then Irene Morgan.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm Greg Winter, Chair of the Wackam County Coalition and Homelessness and Director of the Homeless Service Center at the Opportunity Council. I'm going to start out my statement saying that most of us agree that for the safety and well-being of the people who live and work at the jail, we need a new jail, and I'm not going to add a "but." That's true. I also agree that as a community, we should be proud of our local programs, some of which Sheriff Elfo talked about previously, that act to reduce the number of people, the number of times that particular individuals are booked into the jail and programs that divert people from going to the jail in the first place. We know that some people in the jail, a really important subset of the people there, including some of the jail's most frequent residents, are there because they're ill. That's not to excuse their behavior that landed them in jail for that particular booking, but the root cause of their repeated incarceration is a combination of mental and addictive illness. So while we really should be proud of the local treatment and diversion programs that we already have, we shouldn't delude ourselves into thinking that we've done all that we can to reduce the likelihood that we're going to need to fund a second phase of jail expansion. So as you consider asking the voters to support this substantial new investment, I hope you will consider ways to redouble our efforts to critically examine our current suite of treatment and diversion programs. Let's find out what's working, what's working really well, things that we need more of, what's not working that needs to be improved or reallocated, what's missing, and where do we need investments in additional or improved diversion services outside of the jail. So I'm hoping that this is a moment that we can seize to, you know, put a team together, a combination of local talent. We have a lot of that at the county health department, Wackam Alliance for Health Advancement, who can also draw on national expertise such as exists at the Gaines Center for Behavioral Health and Justice Transformation. We shouldn't wait for the new jail before we do this, we should do this now, so let's make new jail diversion program improvements on a parallel or even accelerated track with a new jail. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy, Irene, and then Robert Leib.
My name is Joy Gilfelin. I'm a Wackam County resident, and I've been standing up for a while now, speaking about restorative economics and restorative justice. I actually started in 2010, bringing forward with Irene a presentation that we did to 24 executives, stakeholders in Wackam County, talking about the fact that we need to address the problems that we're here today talking about. We did the presentation, many people came up afterwards and said, "You know, that's really brilliant." And you know what? Not one of them stepped up to actually help us try to develop a restorative economics plan. Subsequent to that time, we've done multiple conferences, we have talked literally to hundreds of people in this community, and we talk to the people who are voiceless, the people who are terrified to come up and stand against the sheriff, against the executive branch. They're terrified because either their businesses will be shut down, they will be drawn out of town. I've talked to two millionaire-type people who have said that they're taking businesses out of town because they cannot afford to fight the regulatory domination. My experience here is that we have a public hearing. I want to illustrate that we came here to give a public hearing, to give testimony, and the sheriff gets many, many minutes to speak about issues that he's already spoken about many times. We get three minutes. We have gotten three minutes over and over and over. We have delivered hundreds of pages of documents to different council members. This is the first council public hearing. The public hearings formed the jail task force. We got three minutes. Restorative economics, restorative economic plans has not been addressed anywhere. We have been said that our alternatives to jail are the same as alternative programs. That is a complete misnomer there. Two entirely different things. On a national scale, James Comey, the head of the FBI, the gentleman who's the head of the Attorney General, the Van Jones, the president's committees, we have an entire congressional movement to say prison reform is necessary. We are sitting at the precipice in Wackam County right now where we can write an alternative plan if we bring business people together and actually do a real taxpayers' needs assessment. That list of references that the sheriff and the executive branch just put up online, that's a lead of, a list of references. We got 200 pages of references also. That is not a needs assessment. What we needed is a doggone needs assessment. This is the beginning. Our Restorative Community Coalition has been volunteering for five years to do research, and we can't get a full presentation before the county council.
30 seconds, please.
We would respectfully request, and I'm sorry I'm emotional, but you know what? We have a lot of people out there that are scared, and they're scared to stand up here because they can't afford to get incarcerated some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me. We don't allow, we don't allow clapping in the audience. We have differing opinions up here and we don't, so if we can avoid the clapping and the cheering, that'd be good. If it continues, we'll just end the hearing. Irene Morgan, Robert Leib, and Judith, I think it's Feldman.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Glenn Morgan for this information. I didn't know it. It's an RCW 42.56.030, "Construction. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for the people to know. The people insist on retaining, remaining informed so that they may maintain control over the instruments that they have created. This chapter shall be liberally construed and its exceptions narrowly construed to promote this public policy and to assure that the public interest will fully be protected. In the event of conflict between the provisions of this chapter and any other act, the provisions of this chapter shall govern." I'm Irene Morgan. I am founder of the Restorative Community Coalition eight years ago. Thank you for this public hearing. It's very nice to finally be heard somewhat. We need a new jail. We have never said anything different, but not the one that is being proposed. We have many buildings already existing in this community. The Division Street Triage Center could be made into and expanded into a detox, a full detox, a full triage, a full mental health facility, or the Bellingham City could take it over for their own jail, or you could build a 300-bed jail next door. We don't need more than 300 beds when we do all the restorative community actions that we should. Reopen the Gerard Street Detox Center. We have an empty federal work release center at Baker Creek in Iron Gate. We could do a reentry program there that we've talked about for years and years, or make that the detox facility. The mental health, Doug Starcher has an empty group home that was used as a group home. Why aren't we using that? Why aren't we putting some of our mentally ill there that need 24/7 care? Why aren't we doing that? We could have more group homes from that $18 million that the sheriff wants for his headquarters. Let's invest in the Restore Life Center, a program that will give training for essential living, job skills, employment, community service, and support for long-term success. Restorative justice to stop the flow into the jail and educate on nonviolent communication and actions. We've done your research, we've presented it many times. Here is our bill for restorative, or for services rendered. And for the alternatives to jail proposal that the DLR group did not do, we again ask for a committee meeting of the whole to present the entire proposal to you so you can make some good decisions on what goes on here for our community. We invite anyone to sign up on our boards if you want to get together and do a public community, and if you have something going already, we'd be happy to join you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Leib, Judith Feldman, and Kathy Leathers.
I'm against the jail but for renovation and diversion programs. I was drawn into the mental health debate and then the justice system of this county a few years ago when a loved one was diagnosed with a mental illness. These are my observations of our current system. When someone is diagnosed with mental illness, the first contact that you have is the psychiatric ward at St. Joseph's. In our case, he was in for three weeks to a tune of about $70,000 billed to our insurance. He was released on a 90-day less restrictive order, but there was no follow-up, so within days, he was back on to his old cell. This happened a couple of times until he was arrested for a behavioral issue. Then the real drama started. Something that he should have been given a slap on the wrist for and sent for treatment turns into a felony because he has no understanding of the law and what he is charged with. He acts on impulse. Then comes a missed court date because of lack of case management, and back to jail he goes. When he gets incarcerated, we receive a call from the jail because we don't have a landline, we can't accept a collect call. We need to set up an account for him for about $15 and authorize a monthly payment plan just so he can talk to us. The jail is basically extorting money from us through an outside contractor just so this person can make a call. He tells us he is very hungry all of the time, so I agree to put money on his account. Did you know that you have to use a machine that is run by an outside company that takes a convenience charge and adds about 10% just to get money for food for extra things for somebody in jail? I look into bailing him out and realize that this is another form of extortion from another company just so you can be released and get treatment because nothing is being offered to him in jail. He is not even being assessed and certainly not being medicated. I decided to leave him for a few weeks so he could be assessed. I was afraid of him being back on the streets in his condition. Big mistake. Being unmedicated and misunderstood, the inmates pick on him. The guards abuse him, he threatens them, and picks up two more felonies while he's in jail. The guards were afraid for their lives of this young mentally ill person. I decided I need to bail him out and get him away from the jail atmosphere because he was too vulnerable. Did you know that you can't pay the bail directly to the jail? You have to pay a machine, and it of course takes a convenience fee of 6%. Once he's out, there's still no support, so we pick up and deal with the paid psychiatric care, court dates, lawyers, and a legal system that's bent on stacking charges on someone that is already disadvantaged. By the time it is all done, the outcome is a plea bargain, one felony, and thousands of dollars in fees and fines and paid probation. It is blatantly obvious to me that the current system is being run as an income stream. The problem is that it is taking the people from their society to their most vulnerable and have the least ability to pay for any of this. Every time I bring this story up in public, other people speak and have similar stories. I realize that we are not alone.
30 seconds, please.
There are hundreds, if not thousands, of fellow citizens that have been going through this type of experience. The people that come through this are faced with mental disadvantage to start with. Then you add a few felonies, thousands in fines, and you have people that... Then you add a few felonies, thousands in fines, and you have people that just give up. They will never be contributing members of our society, and that is a waste. They just need your help. So please tell me how building an even larger jail and putting your community into deeper debt is going to help solve the problems that this community faces with mental health. I believe that this will, what will happen is there will be even more pressure on the jail for us, and there'll be more people having these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me. Sir, can I just ask you to leave your name and phone number with the clip?
He's, he sends stuff to us.
All right. Judith Feldman, Kathy Leathers, and Byron Lloyd.
Thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening and express opinions. From my point of view, I've been living next.
Can you give us your name to begin with?
Sorry, Judith Feldman.
Thank you.
My personal situation is that I've been living next door to a drug dealer for several years. I've had my life threatened. I've been through pretty much hell. And thanks to the police force, the undercover drug people, the state patrol, I can't even tell you, thank you to all, all of our police, Waukam County Sheriff's Department, that have worked so hard to do something about these perpetrators in our, in our neighborhoods who have addicted children, you know, and start, created a gang of children that they train to break into houses, especially the Canadians who weren't there to protect their homes. Other death threats against residents in the area. We did form a block watch because we didn't understand what was going on. But as far as I'm concerned, I think a larger jail is appropriate, just because we need a holding place for some of these kingpins that right now have been thumbing their nose at us because they got out on bail right away, so it's all about ha, ha, ha. Being, having, watching a police officer getting flipped off by a drug dealer standing right next to him. No respect for the police. Kids in school dropping out because of drugs. Now, I thought it was because kids were bored, you know, after school, but no, I've been told by the kids that it happens in school. They get bored with school, they do drugs. So there's just a whole lot that we need to do, but we should have a larger jail, and we should be focusing in on the kingpins, and we should be bringing programs into the school. I have one that I've been working on called AmericanYouthCorps.com. We don't have a draft anymore. There are a lot of young people that don't have a purpose in their life. I tutor these two East Indian children. They're not children anymore. They're now 16 and 18 years old. I'm very proud of them. Been doing it since they were nine and 11 years old, and they love our country. And they love everything about what we do and our educational system, and they don't understand why our children don't appreciate our education and all the things that we have to offer. So we need to really, we need another jail, we need a bigger jail, but we also need to address all of these issues that are happening with our young people. They need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Leathers, Brian Lloyd, and David Jefferson.
My name is Kathy Leathers. I live at 810 Mason Street in Bellingham. And I'm here to ask you why we're continuing, continuing down the same old path of more incarceration and a larger jail that will assimilate a larger population of, of prisoners. You say to look at alternatives, and our alternatives that our sheriff just gave us would make me wonder why there is a need for such a large jail if these alternatives that are already available are actually working. There was one interesting that Carl Weimer made in the, in the paper where he said, "A simple, less expensive," this is a quote, "inexpensive way to reduce incarceration will be to reinstate the part-time county employee who called defendants to remind them of their court hearings on the next day." That's a very good idea. I've been watching and reading the newspaper and keeping track of the jail bookings. And for about a month, I did a spreadsheet, and the majority of bookings were for, or a large percentage, were for failure to appear. So I don't understand why we need such a large new jail that costs so much money way out in the county when we apparently have programs, according to our sheriff, already going on in the count, already going on within our system. So I'm asking you to please reconsider such a large jail. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Lloyd, David Jefferson, and Larry Thompson.
Brian Lloyd, Waukam County. I currently am a corrections officer in the Waukam County Jail. I started in 2001, almost 15 years ago. When I started, the administration said within 10 years, we would have a new jail. I don't find that very funny because I worked there. I would like to open your minds a little bit to the approach of, everybody talks about incarcerating inmates. Currently, there's 90-some corrections deputies that put their lives on the line every day, working and living with these inmates eight to 16 hours. I don't know if anybody here knows what that's like. You guys come through and do tours. I appreciate that a whole bunch, to see, open your eyes to see our environment. But this isn't about, for me, this is not about accommodating inmates or making more room for inmates. We need to make a safer inmate for my family who works at the Waukam County Jail. Each and every one of those 90-some people has a family that goes to school, goes to church, works in the community. I can't go anywhere in this community without being recognized by somebody who's been in jail. Granted, I have never had a negative contact with any one of those people because I try and treat them fairly, firmly, and justly every day. I get respect for that. We need to move forward and get this plan done. It's, it's of the utmost importance because my family at home, my children, have lived in this community for 40 years, are just as important as my family at work. They're like brothers, they're like sisters. It's an expanded family. Well, some of you here are law enforcement, you may know what that's like. It's, it's something to be proud of, something to take integrity of, to go home every day and say, "I did something good for the community every day. I dealt with these people who came to jail for uns, for some unseen, and unseen set of circumstances that landed them there." That is unfortunate, but we're there to help them through that process. And for, and for my family at work, I beg you to move this forward as soon as possible and without delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
... And as usual, my preparation didn't quite fit the bookends that you suggested, so it may be a little less than complete today. There was a time when I was very involved in the Bellingham Behavioral Health Services, and I was pretty privy to all the different levels of care that were here. I had an opportunity to serve on the 1/10th of 1% Behavioral Health Council for a while and got to see how services were funded. Now, and then a period of time after that, I got to work for Oregon Health and Sciences University, and our key objective was to provide training and technical assistance to the behavioral health workforce. So I was privy to looking at some of the emerging evidence-based practices and services for people with mental health and behavioral health services. So one of the things I wanted to talk with you about is that and the relationship to, of the Affordable Care Act that is in place now. And in particular, there is new funding now for services like health homes. And there, the health home model is, is a way to serve people with chronic diseases like diabetes, heart disease, people with long-term care services, and people that have mental health and substance use disorders. The challenge with some of the health homes these days is that they're not quite geared up yet to serve a specialized population like the people that are involved in the criminal justice system and have behavioral health and mental health services. They've, they're, they're spanning that way, but there's not yet enough specialized care. But most of the medical field is now launching health homes and care coordinators. So that's a, that's a big change that's happened, and it's pretty new. So we're still trying to get our feet underneath us about how that all works. So one of the things that I would suggest is that people that come in contact with the legal system, let's figure out a way to fund a care coordination system for them in the time that they're, they're trying to make that decision to get into the type of services they need. A lot of times, we just cut them loose and say, "You go find the services you need to find." Most folks that are impaired like that can't find all the services they need. So if you have a care manager that's working with them on a regular basis.
Thirty seconds, please.
You can connect them with those kind of services. The second part of all this is providing long-term adaptive care, continuing care services for two to five years after people have had their acute care services. So what we end up doing is serving a lot of acute care services, and then we drop them off, and they end up rotating back through the system. So more in the beginning, more in the end. Thank you very much. And here's your research packet.
All right. Thank you. Larry Thompson, Randy Adrian, and Kay Sardo.
Good evening, Larry Thompson. I'm a Bellingham resident. I'm here tonight as a private individual, not in my professional background because my employer has not taken a formal position on the jail issue. I have some written material I'd like to leave behind, but I want to make about four points verbally. First, I think the evidence is overwhelming that we need a jail, we need it now. Second point I would make is that, as has been heard, just to reemphasize, the jail is our largest behavioral health facility. It's that by default. National statistics suggest that something like 64% of all people in jails are mentally ill, and a somewhat higher percentage have a substance abuse problem. Third point I want to make is I think it's important strategically at this point in time not to delay the jail, but to link it in very clear, direct ways with the further build out of diversion facilities. I'd like to emphasize that. And because you've asked for specific alternatives, I have three that I'd like to spend the rest of my time speaking to. First, I think it is very clear that we need a replacement to our current completely inadequate diversion facility. And that is a key need because it has been proven over and over again across the country to be able to divert people not only from jail, but also from emergency rooms, both of which are not the most efficacious treatment setting for people in need. There is a community coalition that has begun to meet that is putting together some very specific proposals about what that diversion facility might look like. I have details of that in the written material that I'm hoping to leave behind. My second point is, I think another key gap that you need to look at very seriously is substance abuse treatment, specifically inpatient substance abuse treatment. I think if you go and talk with some of the personnel within the jail, as I have, there is a pattern of people being discharged who probably need to go into inpatient treatment, be held safely in some other setting for a while, but oftentimes, there just simply is nothing available. There is no inpatient substance abuse treatment in Waukam County. So that's another, another need to consider. And the third one I would point out is a post-diversion activity. Mr. Jefferson just alluded to something very similar in his comments. I would call that intensive case management, which is basically case managers to help people who have come out of the treatment system, out of the jail system, to navigate their way effectively through the right mix of services for them to help them to lead more productive lives. Thank you for your consideration, and I don't envy you the difficult jobs you have.
Thank you. Randy Adrian, Kay Sardo, and Catherine Chambers.
Hi there. Randy Adrian. I am a corrections deputy for over 32 years. Currently, I'm assigned to the alternative program section. My responsibility is electronic home detention. We have work release and custody work crew, out-of-custody work crew. We divert over 70, 70 people a day out of the jail system. We are doing what we can. With that monstrosity we have over there, it needs to go, and we need something. 500 beds is not totally unreasonable. In 1986, we had Expo. Three years after Expo, Waukam County increased in population by 30%. We were scrambling. In the conditions that we are, everybody wants to move to Waukam, or Washington. We are going to grow. We are not going to stay stagnant. If we don't fill those 500 beds, fantastic. I'd be a happy person. But when it's there and we need them, we need them. We can't wait. The people of Waukam County, my family that I work with in jail, they need this. When we go to the academy, it's care and custody. Care of the individuals we are taking responsibility of. If we have to play musical people every time someone comes into jail because they don't get along or there isn't space, it's not safe. It's not safe for the inmates. It's not safe for the officers. I ask you to push this forward to the people of Waukam County as soon as possible. We need this. It's going to take time to build a jail. It's not going to be something that happens overnight. I saw this in the old jail. There's only five of us left that work the sixth floor. We saw conditions that I would never want to see again, but yet I'm seeing them again with overcrowding, dilapidated structure. There we are. My message is short and sweet. Please push this to the voters of Waukam County. Thank you.
Thank you. Kay Sardo, Catherine Chambers, and Catherine Waters.
I'm Kay Sardo. As most of you know, I live and vote at 510 South State Street in Bellingham. Can you hear me?
Be close as you can get, that'd be good.
Okay. I'm, okay? I'm here once again in my year-after-year testimony that a plan to build a much-needed county jail outside the county seat and far away from legal infrastructure and easy transportation for families and those facing criminal charges is a continuation of past throwaway-the-key attitudes. There are people here tonight, and you've heard some of them, who will add detail, to which I have said all the things I've said in our hearings and meetings before. I'm hoping that you will hear them and not continue down a wasteful road that fails to plan for reducing numbers of people incarcerated. As you move toward the ballot, you have the opportunity, by judicious inclusion of funding for programs such as Seattle's, you've seen it in the Seattle Times this last week, Seattle's very cost-effective and humane lead law enforcement-assisted diversion program, and expansion of our health department and probation departments. If you included restorative justice principles and housing first, as well as before and after incarceration counselors, numbers and needs for beds will not only be reduced, but many more of us in Waukam County will be in favor of moving forward toward a more humane setting for both employees and fewer inmates. It's all critical. I think about asking our citizens in that package that goes to the voters for a percentage of that package to be dedicated to incarceration reduction, all those programs that folks are mentioning. There are people here who have the skills and the vision to help, and they will, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Catherine Chambers, Catherine Waters, and Rick Kine.
Good evening, Catherine Chambers, city of Bellingham. So I've been here quite a few times on this topic as well. So I don't have to remind you that there's a current reduction in crime rates across the nation. I don't have to remind you that jails and prisons are made up primarily of people of criminals. I don't have to remind you that recidivism rates continue to be well over 60% in this country, including Washington State. What I will say, as the importance of mental health programs and treatment programs that we've talked about tonight are indisputable, however, if these jail-based programs worked, we wouldn't have such high recidivism. The fact is that they don't work primarily in jail situations. They work in community-based programs, mental health programs and treatment programs. And if you look at that based on a restorative justice model, which diversion is a part of a restorative justice model, but a restorative justice model is made up of a partnership between the community and criminal justice, which provides the necessary family supports, treatment providers, neighborhood participants, and ensures the rehabilitation and safety for the community at large. And that's based on, we have a very good model of that with teen court here. But I might add that teen court isn't even funded by our criminal justice system. They're coming to the city of Bellingham for social services funding. So I want to also say, in addition, when we talk about the jail, what the plan is for accountability to the taxpayers. We have a current facility that's crumbling and in disarray, which is only 31 years old. Where's the accountability to the taxpayers in that situation? And how is that going to change in a brand-new facility? And then I also just wanted to add to the very poignant comments that the gentleman made earlier about the fees and the costs that we contract with companies to nickel-and-dime our families to death. Those families are the most important part of rehabilitation, and we're bankrupting them by these charges that happen. And also, if you have a facility in the county, we're talking about video. That who's going to pay for? Again, not the system, but the families. So I really urge you to consider a restorative justice model that's a clear restorative justice model, which diversion is a part of and programs are a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Waters, Rick Kine or Kine or Abe Jacobson.
I'm Catherine Waters from the City of Nookseck, and I came to speak for alternatives to this most costly jail proposal. First, timely judicial process via speedy trials and restorative justice hearings. And second, up-to-date effective mental health programs, which a lot of people have spoken to. We waste our money on punitive justice when we warehouse mentally ill, accused, and convicted persons that exacerbates their illness. It costs us a lot of money, and those people end up back in jail. Neuroscience research teaches us that our brain neurons and our behavior and character patterns will change in a nourishing environment. Let's provide that nourishing environment for the mentally ill. Let's invest in time-proven effective strategies of drug addiction treatment centers, behavioral health clinics, and restorative justice. Let's facilitate folks talking face-to-face in good faith. Let's build a better community, one reconciliation, one reparation at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Kine, Abe Jacobson, and Chet Dow.
I'm... [inaudible]
Okay. Abe Jacobson, Chet Dow, and Tyler Ryan.
Abe Jacobson, I live in Bellingham. I'm not generally enamored of $100 million projects and police side of the shop, but I know that in Sheriff Elfo, we have somebody who has a long-term, very good commitment to mitigation other than just sending people to jail. He's always been very supportive of mental health and non-jail alternatives, and I think we're in the difficult situation where we simply need that jail. If the 521 beds will be too big by 50 or 75 initially, unfortunately, we're going to be one of the most habitable parts of the nation in 30, 40, 50 years, as environmental refugees come from the Southwest, and they come here for a temperate climate which isn't burning up. So you can expect more people, and it will be a mixed bag of people like anybody. I would have one question. I think we need to build this jail. I think we need to build it as proposed, and I also am supportive of the alternative diversion programs that Catherine Chambers and others mentioned, but not as a substitute for the jail. I do have one question, though, having looked at the homeless situation at some depth. How much are we a magnet community, this county, for folks with real issues who move in? And if we are a magnet community, then are we not digging holes in water? Are we not doing an impossible task? Because our feeble efforts will be totally enfeebled compared to the waves of replacement problems. That's just my fear, that we might be a magnet community, and if so, how can we disincentivize that?
Thank you. Chet Dow, Tyler Ryan, and Teresa Erickson.
Good evening, council. I'm Chet Dow. I live in rural county, and I want to thank every single one of you up here for your service and what goes on. You've got a real weight on your shoulders with the challenges that are subject to discussion tonight, and I don't envy your position any way in trying to figure out how to pay for it and everything else. I was not really ready to bring a bunch of specific things to do with the diversion program aspect of this. All I wanted to do, to respect the three minutes, was to say that our county's invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, of thousands of dollars, in the DLR study that led to the project that's before us. And I believe that this was a premier expert in the field of corrections, and that they put together a really great report that the sizing of the facility, the 521 beds, is a conservative number. It's actually, when you look at the data, which all of you, I'm sure, have been over many times, we're not oversizing what's been proposed here at all. And I guess that the one point I want to leave with is, it's been pointed out that for more than 20 years, the need that we all acknowledge is there for replacing a really dismal environment. And in my unhumble opinion, 20 years ought to be enough time to gather the kind of data that's needed to make a decision and move forward. I know many people already have spoken before me, and they've made some specific points that if I had prepared a lengthy speech or something, I could have reiterated. No need to reiterate. I mean, we need this thing. 20 years should have been a long enough time. Nobody believes more in the concept of addressing our mental health needs, which, anyway, that's a big need as well. But I see that just a little bit more as a project that be separated off, and if more data needs to be assembled to do a good job in that area, we ought to do that. But let's get this project moving. It's costing us $500,000 a month for delay, as you know, and I just think that's unconscionable. We've got to have the project, so let's get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Ryan, Teresa Erickson, and Margaret Curtis.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Ryan, Waukesha County. First and foremost, I think it's important that we recognize the amount of time that Sheriff Elfo and County Executive Jack Laus have spent on this project, and I think that while there's a lot of opinions that come out about what should be done and what shouldn't be done, the amount of time that they've spent looking into this and exploring all those options is very considerable. And I think that, from the county council standpoint, that you guys should recognize that that time that they've spent has explored all of the options, and has explored, I shouldn't say all of them, but it's explored what they feel is the best option. And I think it's important that we put our support behind our elected officials to make the decisions that we've elected them to make. And when it comes to the jail project, one thing that concerns me the most is, is that by tacking on all of these extra services and things like that, not to say that they're not important, and I don't want to discount them at all, but I also don't want to see this jail project fall by the wayside and get not approved, and then we are left with nothing. And so I think it's very important that, as the council supports this, or hopefully you guys do, that you support it in a manner that gets this job to just get started. Let's get this thing going. And then from that point, if we need to add other services that are a priority, then we can go back and we can go to the taxpayers and ask for additional funds if we need it. But let's get something working now, because having this project fall apart and not happen is a bigger detriment to our community than the opposite. So, thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Erickson, Margaret Curtis, and Richard Manaval.
Hi, I'm Teresa Erickson. That's T-H-E-R-E-S-A, and I live in Bellingham on Cottonwood Avenue, and you've seen me before, so you know how I feel about this jail project. There's been a lot of things said tonight, and I appreciate, honestly, everybody speaking. Everybody agrees that mental health is a huge issue in this community, but not just the community, but in our country. And I so much appreciate what Sheriff Elfo said about the diversion programs that are taking place. This is a program, I mean, clearly, we do not have a perfect system. It's obvious, when we hear all of the testimony that's been given tonight. But my fear is that with all of the desire to fix a broken system, the opportunity to build a new, safe jail is going to be put on the back burner. We have been talking about this issue for almost 20 years. In my opinion, there is no action that is too fast, because 20 years is long enough. There are lives on the line every single day. As Deputy Adrian said, if we don't fill 521 beds, hallelujah. I believe eventually we will. But my fear is that before we actually get that jail made, we will have that catastrophic loss of life. As a community, are we willing to bear that burden, knowing the kind of hazards that exist in the jail today? I personally am not willing to bear that burden. I feel this community is better than that. I believe that as a community, we support the professionals that work in that jail every single day. They all have families, as was already mentioned, children and wives, and everybody is part of this community. We have a better community than to let that deteriorating building stand where lives are put in jeopardy every single day. You know, this is a community issue, and I believe we deserve a right to vote yes or no on a sales tax. And I believe we need to do that sooner rather than later.
30 seconds, please.
Because we've had 20 years, almost 20 years, to decide what to do with this. It's time to make a decision and move this forward. Yes, continue developing the mental health programs on the side, parallel, but please do not stop this process in its track. We don't want that to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Curtis, Richard Manaval, and then Marvin Wolf.
Margaret Curtis, I'm a resident of Bellingham. I would completely second what Ms. Erickson just said. I am interested in alternatives and diversion and preventing recidivism, and I'm a volunteer board member of Pioneer Human Services, which is involved with giving ex-fenders new lives. I'm very grateful for Sheriff Elfo's letter to you detailing all of the different aspects of diversion and alternative that are already going on, and all the different levels of the county government and the nonprofit arena. And I heard your discussions at the Committee of the Whole today, and I would just urge you that you, most of you say you are for the jail. You need to come out strongly in support of the jail, and you need to move it forward onto the ballot so that we can vote on it, because I think it is absolutely necessary to prevent a tragedy. And you need to trust us and all your county staff that we will continue to work on the alternatives and the diversions, but not to let that need dilute your resolve about the jail, and not to let it delay getting after it. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Manaval, Marvin Wolf, and Bruce Ayers.
Good evening, council. Richard Manaval, I live in Bellingham, Washington. I think many of you know me, some of you don't, especially in the audience here. For a number of years, I served on the Waukesha County Law and Justice Council, but for many years before that, I was very active in crime prevention here in Bellingham. My first acknowledgement or, should we say, insight on the jail situation goes back to the late 1970s, when I began to hear about the condition of the jail. There was a lot of buildup in the press, a lot of articles in the paper, a lot of letters to the editors and so forth about building a new jail. Then finally, one day, it started being built. That was back in the early 80s. Back then, they were talking about alternative programs, medical needs as well as mental health needs. Now supposedly, we built a jail to be able to do that, but unfortunately, we did not. And the reason why? It was too small. That is one of my concerns of today. Are we building it big enough? No. From my take of things, we are not, sadly. But then also, the situation due in regards to our mental health, as well as our medical needs in this community. As a very active person in the Roosevelt neighborhood, Texas Street area, Roosevelt Park area, I learned a great deal about mental health from the experts, from the men and women that work in the mental health community. They taught me again and again what I need to be looking for, interacting with those residents of that area, getting to know many of them. Some of them very illiterate, and some of them very well-educated, PhDs, master's degrees and so forth. As I began to interact with them, also I learned a great deal about their health. Thanks to our county health department, I had a great deal of insight about, should we say, eating right, with the school systems, talking to the principals of Roosevelt Elementary School, and all the different avenues that we went down. And then, of course, the biggest thing is, this community built a Boys and Girls Club in that neighborhood. When we opened that, this community of ours opened that Boys and Girls Club, our crime rate went down 30%. You no longer saw the kids walking around the street. And that's one thing that always troubles me, people talking like we don't do anything in this community. Yeah, we do. Do we do enough? No. Are we doing enough about mental health? No. Because part of that has got to be within the families of this community. It's not just within the jail, which we do need. We do need a good jail. But let's think about something else. We're not talking really about building a jail. We're talking about building an adult corrections facility in Maine Sheriff's Office, something we desperately need. And why? Well, think about it. What is the sheriff's office supposed to provide for us? Safety. Our safety, everybody's safety.
30 seconds, please.
They're supposed to be able to do that. And have we given them the opportunity to do that? In my opinion, no. We have not supported the sheriff's office, whether it's Sheriff Elfo or Sheriff A to Sheriff C. We have not given the sheriff's office what they need to do their job, and we need to. We need to move this jail forward. We need the voters to give a chance to say what they want to do with it, and then we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin Wolf, Bruce Ayers, and Valerie Lloyd.